There is Paul. Perfect timing. We're just, as Paul gets settled, I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. My name is Adam Block. Good evening. Thanks for being with us tonight. I love to see the crowd here. For those joining us at home, thank you very much. This meeting of the Planning Board is being recorded and is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations. Public access to this meeting does not ensure there will be public participation unless required by law. I will now confirm attendance of Planning Board members and staff. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Paul Alpert.
Present.
Artie Crocker.
Here.
Jean McKnight.
Here.
Natasha Spada.
Present.
And the Chair is obviously present. Lee Newman.
Present.
Lee might be muted. There we go. Thank you. And Alex Clea, our Assistant Town Planner. Thank you very much. For those participating in this meeting, please be aware that anything you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, needhamma.gov, unless otherwise noted. The first item on our agenda tonight are the two ADU cases before the ZBA on their meeting of February 16. The first ADU case is for the property located at 50 Morningside Road with Michael and Chabon O'Connell as owners, looking to build an approximately 640 square foot ADU in their existing house, interestingly for their parents. Does anyone have any specific comments for the ZBA on this particular item? Hearing none, then can I have a motion to vote no comment on case one?
And make a motion to vote no comment on case one.
We have a motion by already, a second by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. That brings us to the second case, again, which is an ADU located at 28 Tudor Road with Jean Schwaback as owner, looking to build an 849 square foot ADU for herself, interestingly so her children's family can live in the principal dwelling. So we are already seeing, you know, a breadth of change in how these ADUs are being utilized. Does anyone have any specific comments on that application? Hearing none, then can I have a motion to vote no comment on case number two?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Paul Alpert, a second by Artie Crocker. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Next comes on our agenda, a motion to vote for the record that the Housing Plan Working Group appointments were extended to December 31. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, then I'll come to the vote. Can I please have a motion to extend the term of the appointments to December 31, 2022?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Jean McKnight, a second by Artie Crocker. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. And we still have time to spare. Lee, that's pretty impressive, eh?
Very fast. Very impressive.
So tonight, for those in the audience, we still actually have 10 minutes. Actually, what I'm going to do is jump to item six on the agenda, which are the minutes that Jean's going to pull up. And I had some specific comments. We're dealing now with the minutes of our meeting of November the 15th, 2022. We look for the yellows that Jean highlights for us. On page one, the last paragraph, second sentence, the word additional you're seeking to add, that makes sense.
I did think that two additional stories were below ground, but I didn't take the trouble to pull out the plans and verify that.
It was correct.
Everybody remembers it was additional.
That's fine. And then on page three, second paragraph, the first sentence before the yellow, when it talks about floor area ratio.
Yes.
It actually says floor area ration, which is a common mistake that I make. So I just want to remove the end.
Even I can mistype.
I can't believe it. Jean, it's just not like you.
I think that's autocorrect.
Yes, it very much is. That's right. Otherwise, we have perfection from Jean. So we'll make that change. And then in yellow, I would say, remove unclear. And the reason for that is, Jean, because that refers to the open space.
So it is understood that the project is at .63 FAR without open space with the drive.
And then with the open space, it's .69 because it's expanded the area.
All right. I'll take out the, I'll take out the, across out unclear.
And then lastly.
If it's clear, there are others.
And then lastly, on page four in the yellow, you had a question about the Chair of Law. And Natasha, this relates to the.
This is the, where the. Right. This is the, it's the zoning committee, but it's also, hold on, there's a title for it. Hold on, let me just.
Because I thought.
It's the Smart Zoning and Permitting Subcommittee.
It's the small.
I want to let the Needham.
What is it?
Smart zoning, smart zoning and permitting Subcommittee of the CAPC, of the Climate Action Plan Committee.
But that, smart zoning and.
Permitting.
Permitting.
Subcommittee of the CAPC.
Alex, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were into the minutes when I was sidebarring with you. That's funny. I'm so sorry. So therefore, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 15th as amended tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion by Artie, a second by.
Second.
By Jean. Any discussion? Hearing none, all come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. And we still have five minutes to spare. So for the audience tonight, we'll be discussing, after we deal with and dispense with a third item on our agenda, a number of items that the Planning Board is looking to bring to the, to town meeting. Those items include reforming the zoning bylaw to what we're saying to liberalize the ADUs to, and that would, there's quite a bit of substantial reform, including, most importantly, enabling them by right under most circumstances. There would be a special permit circumstance as well. And we'll get into the detail of that shortly. Yet, we anticipate sending the zoning to the Warrant Committee, which is the Select Board, and then, and then they'll refer it back to us for a public hearing. And then we'll make our final recommendation for the zoning thereafter for town meeting. The second item is really a convenience matter for the ZBA where, where they receive a number of applications a year in the SRB district to allow a third car garage, which they don't, they haven't really seen a legal right to reject them, and they haven't. So we're going to allow that condition by right on a go-forward basis to free up the time and the resources for the ZBA. And then finally, there are three other items that are really, Lee, I think, housekeeping items to clean up our, our zoning bylaw, one of which, one of which Maggie relates to a conversation that you and I had, and this, I'm speaking to Maggie Abruzzi, who's present, who attended a Planning Board meeting previously to discuss improving the parking requirement standard relating to the Institute of Traffic Engineers' most recent addition. So that'll be a cleanup that we're making. We're making another cleanup for, I think, renumbering from item three, from Article 3.15 forward to correctly renumber in our zoning bylaw and another change as well. So that's coming up on our agenda in a little bit. We still have three minutes.
Talk slower, Adam.
Yeah. Talk slow.
I will also, I will also say this.
You can hit it the other way around.
For those, for those that are, that are not present, that are watching from home, I don't know if we have anyone, we will later tonight, in honor of a previous Planning Board member and community participant who recently passed away, Sam Warner, we'll have a memorial motion in his name. We've received, as a matter of record, we've received, I think, a number of items in our correspondence package over the course of our, since our last meeting. Four of those, four of those pieces of correspondence were emails relating to the redevelopment and rezoning proposal for the property at 888 Gray Plain, and two of those emails were from residents relating to our ADU reform. And those can be seen in our packets for tonight. And then we also have, from very recently, the League of Women Voters, an item to save our, save the date in our calendars on Monday, April 24th at 7:30 for an event at the center of the Heights, which I think will be probably an explanatory session of the zoning reform that we're ultimately seeking. So again, the date.
They're annual.
Yeah, exactly. For town meeting members.
Pre-town meeting.
So that is, if you want to mark your calendars, Monday, April 24th at 7:30 PM.
May I, Mr. Chair, may I mention something?
Yes, please.
As far as reporting, you know, the housing plan that the Planning Board approved at its meeting on January 17th was subsequently approved at the next meeting of the Select Board and, and was submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development by our Planning Director on January 26th.
Yes.
So I feel, I just wanted to report that and feel very good about that.
Thank you very much. That brings us to 7:15, and the next item on our agenda is a public hearing for major project site plan special permit number 2022-03 with Welbel Ford Needham Landlord LLC as the petitioner in respect of the property located at 100-110 West Street. And this, with this, we have two pieces of correspondence in our packet. The first is an email from the Chair of the Council of Aging, Ms. Colleen Schaler, who's with us tonight, and that email was dated January 25, 2023, to the Board declaring their opposition to the application as revised. And we also have an, an email from, a letter rather, dated January 24th, 2023, from Attorney Evans Huber, who's here presently, on behalf of the petitioner, requesting to withdraw their current application before the Board and without prejudice, noting that they intend to file another application in the near future. Is there any discussion on this item by any of the Board members?
I would like to understand the reasons for the withdrawal and resubmitment rather than moving forward with the concept that was discussed at our last hearing session, and wondering if Attorney Huber would respond to the strategy behind this.
So what I'll do, I appreciate the question, Jean, is I'll invite Attorney Huber to the microphone here. So if you're able to, then you can respond to Jean's question. If you can state your name for the record, please.
I'm Evans Huber, here on behalf of the applicant. So Ms. McKnight, the answer to your question is, as you know, there's been some unproposed modifications that, to the proposal, that haven't been formally submitted. In addition, we're aware that there is an issue with the eligibility of one of the members to vote on the current application, and we have the application, and we have the election coming up. We hope this does not happen, but there is some possibility that after that election, another member will not be here. So I think it's better just, and cleaner to withdraw and refile so that when it is heard, it'll be heard by all members who are eligible to vote.
I agree with that explanation. I had seen something to that regard, and I forgot. I think it does make sense there.
So do you have a date in mind when you anticipate refiling?
I don't have a specific date, but not, but it'll be, you know, in the relatively near future.
Okay. So I think, Lee, I don't know if you can hear me, in this schedule that you sent me, I think I see it with a potential hearing for the date of April 4. Is that, is that what you were thinking?
That was based upon him providing a new filing sometime in early March.
Right. That, we would have to do it 30 days in advance of whatever the.
Exactly right. So that's roughly what you're anticipating.
Yes.
If you want to wait until after the election, that's.
Right. So we, yes, I think it's, it's prob, if we, if we file in time for that, it would probably be just as well to schedule for after the election.
Okay.
But we can work out those details with, with Lee.
Okay. That's fine. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I'm just curious, you made reference to one of these Board members may not be eligible to vote on that? Who would that be?
Mrs. Spada.
That's me.
Okay.
Any other questions? Then, hearing none, can I have a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice for this application?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Paul Alpert, a second by Jean McKnight. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Aye. So we'll look forward, Evans, to a new application at some point.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, members of the Board.
Thank you. So that then takes us to the fourth item on our agenda, which are the zoning articles. We have about 55 minutes before our next public hearing, after which we may pick up and resume on this. I'd like to, are you, Alex, able to bring up and share the screen so we can, so people following at home can see?
The packet?
Yeah. Well, the, yes, exactly. For the zoning articles, the first article, I can't remember what page it is in the packet, but it's to amend the three-car garage at item six, Article 6.1.2. And I also don't know if we have John Schneider from the ZBA with us.
We do not.
We don't? Okay. He and I.
Page 28 from the packet.
Thank you very much, Natasha. So John and I both don't think that we need to regulate the design of the three-car garages, but I don't know if I can convince the Board to lack some of the restrictions on the design.
What are you referring to? In, in the, in the amendment itself, please, what are you referring to?
So, Jean, may I?
Oh, yes, this is the red line.
Thank you very much.
And the original is also attached.
Thank you very much.
Clean.
So I appreciate the question, Paul. So we're talking about the, you know, the space and location of the garage door, whether it's on a corner lot or otherwise, how it's oriented.
Would you like, would you like me to summarize? I think I.
Sure.
You know, it's that, what we're doing is allowing three car garages by right. Only require a special permit in the circumstance where the applicant wishes to have the three, three garage spaces right in the front of the building without any setback. If they, even just one of the three garages is set back five feet, then that will be allowed by right also. So it's only in the circumstance where the three, where they, for some, for whatever reason, the applicant feels they cannot move it back feet, five feet, or don't want to, they would have to get a special permit for that.
And.
And otherwise, it's all by right. If it's in the back, you know, if it's, if it's on the side of the house, if it's under the house with a ramp, if it's in the back of the house, which would be unusual, it would be by right. And if it's in the front of the house, provided they set it back five feet. And what's the reason for that? Some people would argue, well, is this a proper subject for zoning? This is the aesthetics of what our neighborhoods look like, what our houses look like. We very often concern ourselves with the look of, of the property that, and, and design our zoning in such a way that it is concerned with the look of the property. We're doing that, we'll be talking about that with the accessory dwelling units. And the idea is, and I did, actually did a study a couple of years ago, took photos, kind of ranked, I mean, using my own values, what it looked like. And the, the flat three garages right in the front is what really seems like it's taking away the beauty of the house and the neighborhood. So that's, that's what we're talking about.
So my, my thought on that, that's a very helpful summary. So this originates really through the ZBA, who deals with these applications and the special permits, is that it still is amounting to architectural censorship. And furthermore, that, that the taste today may change in 10 years or five years. So, you know, John doesn't see the need for it from the ZBA, who handles this, you know, you know, on behalf of the town, through the ZBA. And I, I generally don't like the concept of architectural censorship, but I'm not going to spend an hour trying to convince the rest of my colleagues. So unless there's someone else that wants to jump in the ring with me, I'll jump out of the ring.
Well, just that, at the meeting when John was here, John, at some point, it sounded like John was understanding what, very specifically what we were talking about, whether he, whether he agreed or disagreed, but then he, then he acknowledged some understanding of what we were doing, why we're doing it.
So am I.
We don't have, I mean, we don't have a letter from him stating exactly how he feels right now.
I do, actually. I do, Artie.
Okay, good. The fact is that when we had this large house studying committee, and we came before with the bylaw changes, we set, we set the garage back five feet from the house, no, 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 no greater than the front of the house. And that was directly related to architectural. Directly related to architectural was the setbacks and now going to the wall of the house, not the overhang of the house, because visually, it's architecturally much more pleasing. Very specifically, we deal with architecture all the time. The, the house going down the side of the house has to step backwards, after 35 feet, it has to step back. That is directly related to an architectural visual fact. So we deal with that all the time. So the fact that this is a three-car garage in the front of the house that potentially has a look of a business, you know, some type of business and just one flat garage is directly related to visual aspects of the neighborhood.
So the, so just.
It's perfectly within our realm to say, no, it should be pushed back.
Well, I, I mean, I would think it's in the purview of the Design Review Board. Natasha, I'm going to come to you in a second.
Yeah, but it's in the purview of us. I mean, the other ones were in the purview of the Planning Board. This is in the, this, this is in the, and the other garage, the setbacks were in the purview of the Planning Board. Yes, it went through a large house review, but this is very much in the purview of the Planning Board as well.
The planning, generally speaking, yeah.
I don't think the Design Review Board gets involved with single-family homes, number one.
They don't at all. Yeah, I talked to the Design Review Board.
And number two, what was my number two?
Oh, yeah, I totally distracted you. I just wanted to agree with you.
Let me clarify, there's nothing in the three-car garage, proposed changes to the three-car garage that involves any reference to Design, to Design Review Board.
That's right.
So my attitude, which I think I expressed when we discussed this before, but I have a tendency to repeat myself.
Please.
So I'll repeat myself now. I disagree with Jean as to the aesthetics. I have no problem with the three-car garages being, being flat, but I understand her point of view. And we allow the three-car garage with a five-foot setback, if they're all on the front plane. We allow it as of right if one of them has a five-foot setback, and, which is, I understand the point of view of Jean and possibly many Needham residents, that that is much more aesthetically pleasing. We do have setbacks, as I recall, in, for single-family homes that have a long wall.
Right.
We have, after a certain number of feet, you have to set back.
I think it's 35.
Yeah. So we do, do that. And I've got no problem with the concept of a developer who wants to avoid having to get a special permit and going to the ZBA, setting it back five feet. And then he can do it as of right.
Or a homeowner.
And if he wants to have it not set back five feet, then he has to spend the money to go to the ZBA.
Right.
And if he's willing to spend the money to go to the ZBA to do it, more power to him.
It's not just a developer, it's also a, it could be a homeowner, too.
Well, a homeowner is going to hire a contractor, whoever.
Right.
So I'm in favor of keeping it the way it is.
Right.
I don't think it's going to be that onerous on the ZBA to have some applications, some people who want to have it not set back five feet, having to go to the ZBA. Every once in a while, we'll have an application.
I, I understand, I understand that. You, when you say that you're okay, you mean.
I'm okay with the way it's drafted.
Yes, okay. Thank you for the clarity. Natasha, I apologize. Please.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to add to what others have said, but, Adam, you said architectural censorship, and architectural censorship is about a style, and this is about a setback. So to me, it's no different than any of the other setbacks that we have, to, to create a building that is proportionally in plan and tectonically appropriate for the different lots that we have. And so that, that's why I think that I, I would stand with the way that we wrote it and feel strongly that it'll, the setbacks are more appropriate. And from the side, again, if, if they want to do three on the side, that's as a, as of right. If they want to do it and they don't want to step it back, they can do it, stepping back, back by five feet. If not, it would be a special permit. So I feel similarly to Jean and Artie in, about keeping it the way that it was. But I appreciate what you, what you brought up. I still don't think we're censoring anything because we don't have any, say, an architectural style or design, and neither does the Design Review Board.
My only comment, though, is with that, Natasha, is the setback is as a result of a style choice that those, that the Planning Board is talking about. In other words, the Planning Board is saying they don't like the flat plain. That's a look. That's a style.
But, but we have it for other things. It's the length of the flat plain. It's not a style. It's not related to any style. It's about proportion of building on the lot. So it's, I mean, it has nothing to do with architecture. It has to do with setbacks and zoning.
I, I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that we send the, we send the zoning amendment, which is labeled Article One, Men's Zoning Bylaw, Accessory Three-Car Garage Used in Single Family Residence B, to the Select Board for their review, to have them send it back to us.
As drafted.
As present, as drafted.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
The second by.
Both of us, by Jean.
So I, any discussion on, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha, Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you very much for the motion. That motion carries. Thank you very much for the motion, that motion carries. So that will go forward as discussed. The next item is, we have two different versions of the amendment for ADU. This is in respect of Article 3.15 in our zoning bylaws as relates to the ADU. We have one, Lee, I might need some help on this, but if I remember correctly, we have one, I'll take a step back. Ultimately, what we're looking to do in both of these versions is to allow the ADU by right, which is the most fundamental and most impactful change that the town can make. And also, we're allowing it to be rented. So under the current regime, you can only have an ADU by special permit, and it can only be for a caregiver and/or a family member. Now, we're proposing that it be by right, and in addition for it being for the, a caregiver or a family member, it could also be rented for a term of 12 months.
Or more.
Or more. And, and that, and that it could be for an existing structure, and a detached structure would require a special permit. The split?
Let's point out that right now, under the bylaw, an ADU in a detached structure is not permitted at all.
It's prohibited, that's right, thank you, Paul. So, so in case that's not clear for people at home, as my colleague Paul had just mentioned, ADUs under the existing condition are only allowed if it's part of the existing structure of the house. You can bump out the house. It doesn't have to be within the footprint, but it's only available if it's part of the existing principal dwelling, as opposed, and it's prohibited in an accessory structure. Now, we're proposing to allow it in a separate structure by special permit. And the question before the board is really, do we allow it in a structure that's like a garage, that's, that's five feet from the setback? And I had an opportunity in the last few days to look at a number of homes and to actually go inside some of these garages, especially as a two-car garage that may be within a five-foot setback, and still could be a very effective, if it was a two-car garage, could be turned into an effective ADU. It would not be a, you know, it would not be as, you know, 850 square feet. So then, so then the question is, do we want to? I understand that the concept, our strategy before a town meeting is to present to town meeting the broadest approach so that, so that for our public hearing, we then determine, having listened to the residents, we make a learned decision at that time to make any further adjustments before finally going to town meeting for approval. And although initially, I did not, I, I did not agree, but I would say that I didn't agree because I didn't understand it. I, I did not agree with allowing in an existing structure, an ADU that was five feet away. But having looked at it closely, I now have a, have a change of, change of opinion on it. So we have before us two different versions. One that would allow it, which is what I think a number of us on the board will probably advocate for tonight, and then, and then a version without allowing it, that's five feet from the setback. I, I also want to point out a conversation that Paul and I had, which I found particularly revealing to me and very helpful, because we took as an example, I think, on a 10,000-square-foot lot. And I, and we mapped out, I, I'll do that for, for a public hearing. We took a 10,000-square-foot lot, and then we had a, a footprint of an existing house. Do you remember that, Paul? I think it might have been 1,400 square feet of the existing structure. And then we applied the terms of the zoning bylaw and, you know, to, you know, to recognize what's really possible. So I think that what we have are two very good representations. And now it's really a question for the board, do we want to allow it, I think, on the five, you know, at the five-foot setback for an existing structure, provided that that existing structure is not expanded by its footprint and the height's not exceeding 15 feet? Does that make sense?
May I speak?
Please, Paul.
At this point. The purpose of our vote tonight is to send a warrant article to the Select Board, who sends it back to us to have a public hearing. And after the public hearing, we can make amendments and changes to what we send to town meeting.
Yes.
It's my understanding that the changes that we, well, because the, the zoning article that we sent to the Select Board tonight and comes back to us is then published in the newspaper as a notice of the public hearing. And so that is what's in front of the public hearing. It's my understanding that because of, because it's published, we, the changes that we make to the zoning article after the public hearing can be more restrictive than what's published in the paper, but cannot be more expansive.
Correct.
I am in favor tonight of having the warrant article that goes to the Select Board allow for the setback of five feet, so that we can have the public hearing, listen to those who are in favor and those who are opposed, make up our minds. And if we choose to restrict it so that it has to be greater than five feet from the property line, that is more restrictive, we can make that amendment.
Under.
But if we require that it be 15 feet from the property line now, and we have the public hearing, and there are residents who want to allow it as close as five feet, that makes it more expansive, we can't make that amendment. So I'm in favor of, without, without discussing the merits of whether five feet or 15 feet is the appropriate setback, I'm in favor of sending it to the Select Board to, with the draft that allows it to be at five feet, with a specific intent, my specific intent, to make sure that we raise it at the public hearing, we have a discussion at the public hearing, and we can decide whether or not to leave it that way or to make it more restrictive. We have that ability.
Thank you.
But, as I said, I'm repeating myself as I'm wont to do. If we require that it be 15 feet now, we can't make it five feet after the hearing.
That's right. Jean?
Yes, I like that explanation, Paul, that you gave of why we would do it that way. And I, I agree that we should not, in this, in this version that we send to the Select Board for advertising at the public hearing, we should not be strictly, strictly requiring a five-foot setback. So what was proposed was simply to delete subsection B of Section 315.32. I want to ask our chair for a clarification. He said that it would be in the circumstance where there was no expansion of the size of the accessory dwelling unit. What, by simply deleting B, I don't think we make that a condition.
That's correct.
Not to plead to, but if, Lee, could you clarify, have we?
Yes, Jean, Jean, you're correct. What's happening here is if I deleting the paragraph, you're making the structure comply with the underlying setback standards for the district. So basically, the accessory structure, just like any accessory structure, can be sided five feet from the property line, provided it's under 15 feet in height. And then if it's above 15 feet in height, it has to meet the setbacks for the principal dwelling unit. So by deleting the paragraph, I think you create, you know, really the, the case of how accessory structures are currently created, treated under zoning, and you open the window, as Paul expressed earlier, following a hearing, to make a decision about how you want to further restrict it, whether it's retaining the five-foot setback, whether it's limiting, how, limiting its, its placement in an existing structure. You have given yourself that flexibility to make that decision at a later date.
And perhaps the chair meant, when he talked about expansion, the, the situation that's under our current zoning, that if the height is expanded, then they do have to have the setback of the primary structure that's already in our body.
Right. If, so if an existing structure is five feet, setback five feet from the side setback, they could turn that into a, without expanding it, an ADU. If they were to expand the footprint, Lee, not the height, but let's say it was, let's say it was 400 square feet, and they wanted to expand it to 650 square feet of an existing structure that's less than 15 feet in height, and set back five feet from the side setback, that, would that, are you saying that would be allowed?
It's permissible, provided you, you meet the other dimensional standards of the bylaw. So you could, you couldn't expand it, you'd need to meet the FAR standard for that district, lot coverage requirement for that district. You need to meet, meet the setback standard that is, is a standard that exists between the accessory structure and the principal structure. So yes, you can do it, but you have to meet the other rules that are also in your own circumstances.
Understood. Thank you, that's helpful. Are you, are you satisfied, Jean?
Yes, I'm, I'm satisfied to just completely delete subsection B.
Thank you. Artie, do you have any comments?
Yeah, no, I appreciate this. So I've been thinking about this a lot. And, and equitability, fairness is a big part of everything that, you know, should be going on in town. And I think we should bring it to the public discussion, but I actually think we should bring to public discussion that it isn't just existing structures. That would be, in my opinion, that would be unfair, going forth into the future to say, you know, May 1st of this year, that's it, nothing else is allowed. In my, my viewpoint, that completely eliminates some people that would also want to do something like this, is we, you can build the garage now, you know, you can build the garage five feet from the property line.
I don't know that you can, Lee, can you build it?
Can you build the structure five feet from the property line?
You can build a garage five feet from the property line, provided it's under 15 feet in height. And if you, if you eliminate this provision, Artie, you could build a new ADU five feet from the property line, that as long as it, as long as it was under 15 feet in height and met all the other dimensional standards of the bylaw.
So, yeah, so thank you. So if the goal is equitability and fairness for property owners that don't have the ability to have, you know, the 15-foot setback, then the only logical thing in my mind is we also have to allow it for future structures that are built. I don't think it's fair to not allow.
That's what she's saying.
And that's what?
No, no, yeah, no, I understand that.
That's what we have now, yeah.
That's what we have now? No, I'm talking, I'm talking about, no, no, we have something in there where it's only existing structures.
Not presently, no. No, no, no.
We did not make the exception.
We talked about it, but we didn't.
We struck it.
There was a proposal that we require it be set back more than five feet, except for existing structures. And we, and we never went there, although that's kind of still on the table.
Right. And that was, I think, a thought that I had, and I think you rejected it, because effectively what Artie was talking about, of the fairness rule.
Right.
And then, and, and that made sense to me, I agree with that.
And if we decide to, to have it set back more than five feet, then it raises the question about, you know, we can then have a discussion about existing structures. But I agree, right now, I, I agree with Artie, we should be either all in or all out.
And I think we should, I think in the conversation, you should be all in.
Right.
Which is, which is where we are.
Yeah.
If, if we, if we have that further one that I, that further, that I asked Lee to further liberalize, basically. So Natasha, what, do you have any comments or questions? You're muted.
Sorry. I guess I just want clarity and just of what was just said, because I, I'm not sure I, I understand. So Artie was saying something, and then Lee, you corrected him, said, can you just confirm?
So by, by deleting this paragraph, an accessory structure, whether it's a garage or whether it's an ADU, can be built five feet from the property line, if it's under 15 feet in height. And if it's higher than 15 feet in height, it has to be sided at this dimensional standard that's required for the principal dwelling along the rear and the sideline.
Which varies from district to district.
Yes, that's right.
As a function of the district, it's, it's in. So you can, it doesn't speak to whether it's existing or not existing, it just basically says, you know, it's allowed, whether it's new construction or whether it's existing, it's allowed five feet from the property line with a fifth, with a, with a height of under 15 feet. And if it's above 15 feet, it's got to meet the dimensional requirements of the bylaw.
Okay. And you're saying that that is what is currently in the proposed?
No, that's currently, that's currently our full bylaw for the entire town.
Okay.
So I, we drafted two bylaws, we, we had two changes here. One was going to require that it meet the, the accessory dwelling had to meet the setbacks for the principal dwelling, where deleting that paragraph, and by deleting that paragraph, it means this, this accessory structure is treated like any other accessory structure under Needham's current rules. And so what I've described to you is what are the current rules.
Right.
So, and that's?
That's what I understood, yes, okay.
So that, that's the second version of the ADU bylaw that I asked Lee to, to write up for us, so that we did have a more expanded ADU strategy. So it sounds like we're all then aligned on the, on the second version for the purpose of the?
I'd like to raise another issue, because it was raised in an email that we got from Stephen Frail, which is the question of off-street parking.
Yes.
He, we, our current bylaw, which we're not changing, requires that there be, when you have an ADU, that there be at least one parking space for, for each residence. So it requires at least two off-street parking spaces. And Mr. Frail's email questioned doing that, which could be a problem when you create an ADU. You take an existing garage, that's a two-car garage, and you turn it into an ADU, and so you've taken, you've taken that, you may have taken that parking away, and there may not be room on the driveway for two cars. My question is, because I don't know the answer, and I didn't have time to look it up ourselves, does Needham have an off-street parking rule now that says you can't have overnight street parking?
Yeah, I refer you on that one. We talked about that this afternoon.
I don't, I don't have an answer to that question for you, Paul.
Well, I think it's, you know?
We do. I, I can actually, I'm, I'm just looking at one of our Select Board members, who's present, Heidi Frail, who's nodding to confirm that we do have a no overnight parking on the street.
Certainly during the winter time.
Year-round, no overnight parking. So to eliminate the requirement that there be at least one parking space for each unit, that there be at least two off-street parking spaces, would force the residents to violate our bylaw and park on the street. So we need to leave it the way it is.
I, I agree that, I think that one parking space per unit is not excessive at all. In general, for multifamily housing, we require one and a half spaces per unit, and perhaps we should ref-. per unit. And perhaps we should rethink that in the future. But here we're talking only about one space per unit. I think that is reasonable and I would not change it.
I I think, Lee, when you and I talked about that issue today, I think we acknowledge that under the existing rules, all all cars for the property, regardless of the ADU status or not, have to be parked on site. And and that would be a requirement that would continue. Stephen Frail happens to be here. And if you want to, do you want to speak to that issue in particular? And if you do, could you please say your name and address for the record?
So Stephen Frail, twenty-nine Power Street. I think my point in the in the email, Mr. Chair, was to point out that there are good potential that an ADU might be occupied by somebody who is either beyond driving age or has disabilities that prevent them from from driving. And since we already have the no overnight parking rule and additional requirement that there be off, it's unnecessary, in other words. So whoever lives there, be it all the drivers are in the ADU or all the drivers are in the the main house. Maybe it's a moot point was was my point. Over over regulating. That was just my point there.
So you're otherwise satisfied with an expanded ADU bylaw as we've drafted that requires that all vehicles belonging to residents of either the ADU and or the and the primary residents, the principal residents are parked off-street and on the lot.
I think that's that's fair. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for the verification. So unless we have any other comments, and I don't think
Other comments.
Good. Thank you very much, Jean.
So we're satisfied that we're making that change. There's a couple of things I noticed. With regard to the the owners, this being the owner's primary residence. We have a discrepancy between the use of primary residence in section three, on the first page, three fifteen, two, paragraph B, where they refer to primary residence. And then paragraph D, where we use the word principal residence. And I don't think we had any intention of making a distinction between primary and principal. The word principal is used currently inside paragraph D of our bylaw. Notwithstanding that in the very first paragraph of intent, the word primary is used. So I think that was simply a mistake. I don't think there really was any intention to use two different words to describe the same thing. So I propose, and I I did kind of do some searching for how the word primary residence is used. And in Internal Revenue Service rules for determining per person's residence for purpose of taxation, the word primary is used. And when you look up the word principal, it says principal residence, i.e. primary residence, you know what I mean? It's just, the correct word is primary. So I propose that in sub-paragraph D, in the second line, we changed the word principal to primary. So it says, and this is to define the owner, it this is, it's the owner. And for whom the property is such owner's primary residence. Right? And I'm and also I found another section in the bylaw where we use the word primary residence. So the only where we have that inconsistency is in that D section.
This is the only place where we use principal, where we should have used primary.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, we use the word principal structure and that sort of thing. And we mean to, you know, compare it to the accessory structure.
Principal dwelling, I believe, is is the term that we use in our definitional section in Article One. And so we're carrying that forward.
Yeah, principal dwelling as compared with accessory dwelling or accessory structure. Another issue I I do want to
Before you move forward, though, Jean.
If everybody's okay with that, yes.
Before we do, so you're you're talking about you about the question that I had raised earlier today. Is that, so I I just for clarity on the reason why that comes up is because we made a distinction in the in our reform of the of the ADU bylaw that the resident of the ADU who may be a tenant could, it doesn't, we initially had it required that it would be their primary residence. But we subsequently chose to change that because it could be a it could be a resident who's who may actually have an official residence status in another state, like Florida or New Hampshire or any other state. And I I had thought that discussion related to both the primary residence and the ADU. But in asking questions to my colleagues earlier today, it was clear that it was
It wasn't a question of primary residence versus ADU. It was a question of the owner versus a less C. We're requiring that the that the single that that the single family residence with or without an ADU be the primary residence of the owner in order to allow an ADU to begin with.
So, right, yeah. And it doesn't matter whether the owner lives in the primary residence or
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Right, as long as the the property
The property owner.
Primary residence. Whereas a less C is somebody who could very easily be in Needham, even though we're requiring a one-year lease. It may be somebody who was coming to Needham specifically for a one or two-year purpose and then planning to leave, like a student.
Right, right.
Are we referring to primary principal as in this essentially is their voting state?
Yes, that's right.
It has to be their voting address.
That's that would be a factor.
That's one factor.
Where they register their car, where they vote, where they pay their taxes. Those are all factors in determining whether
At this time, I see a member of the public has their hand up. A person by the name of Anthony. Alex, are you able to please bring them over as a as a participant? Anthony, if you can hear us, we're going to bring you over as a participant. And then we'll come back to your additional points. I had one as well. Anthony, if you can hear us, we're making effort to bring you over as a participant. Okay, so we made an effort. Jean, why don't you continue at this time and then we'll if he comes over in the interim, just mute him and then we'll
Anthony, you should have something. Is it a pop-up at his end?
Yeah, it says, do you want to become a panelist or something like that?
Right. So Anthony, you have to accept it. You have to click on something in order to to be moved over.
All right, well, at this time, I'm going to recognize Jean, who had additional comments.
Yes, and my additional comment goes to whether we should limit the size of the ADU to eight hundred and fifty square feet. When we, I really don't forget, we don't remember the thinking that went into why eight hundred and fifty square feet, you know, three, four years ago when we first put ADUs and allowed ADUs. But the standard that seems to be used commonly is nine hundred square feet. It's just fifty square feet more, you know, the size of a small bathroom. And Wellesley, for example, used nine hundred square feet. There is actually, both in the last legislative session, and there was a bill that would have required every every city or town to make provision for ADUs in their zoning. And that used a nine hundred square feet. That
That didn't pass.
It did not pass. I don't know if it ever even came up to a vote. It might not have gone up to media. I really don't know the history. But it's been filed again. The same idea that every city or town should provide for ADUs and they should be nine hundred square feet. And I don't really see a difference of why we're picking eight fifty. I I think it may be that eventually there will be a state law and it will be nine hundred and then there'll be discrepancy. I'd like to go to nine hundred in the current version that we're bringing before the town. And we can always bring it back to eight fifty, as you pointed out, for the rationale of being able to make a change back toward what we have now.
I mean, nine hundred is quite large. I mean, thirty by thirty. You got a thirty by thirty footprint, you got nine hundred square feet.
Right, but what Jean is saying is that if we have eight fifty and we have the discussion at the hearing, we can't make it nine hundred because that makes it more expansive. But if we make it nine hundred tonight, we can go back to eight fifty after the hearing.
I'm fine. I'm fine going to nine hundred.
And if the state, Jean, went from nine hundred to twelve hundred, would you be okay with that for an ADU?
Well, if they made us do it, it said every town has to have ADUs at twelve hundred, which I think very, very unlikely. We wouldn't have any choice about it.
If it was required, I understand that. But if it said it could be up to, would you want to move it from nine hundred to twelve hundred?
No, I would not want to.
Why not?
Because to me, twelve hundred is a rather large. And also, we have a limit, I believe, we have a limit on bedroom. We have a limit on bedrooms. Yes, it can only be one bedroom. And so there's really no need for twelve hundred square feet for a one-bedroom unit. Whereas nine hundred square feet, I think, is a reasonable size for a one-bedroom unit.
So my my first house in Needham was a thousand-square-foot ranch, which was a three-bed, one-and-a-half-bath house.
Before we had children?
No, 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 we had, we had Jeffrey was two. And I think he would just turn two. And I'm still mindful of, you know, I remember this was not I don't think there was full consensus at the planning board the last time we were dealing with ADUs. I think a lot has changed. You know, in our community since then. I'd be curious if nine hundred could pass, given all the other major changes, the more substantive changes that we're making. I hope that it would. Lee, if if we went to town meeting with all of these changes, including as proposed by Jean to go from eight fifty to nine hundred and town meeting rejected it, would we how long would we have to wait before we could bring the same zoning back up? You're muted, Lee.
I think on an affirmative vote of the board, you could bring it back, you could bring it right back up.
There's no, I thought there was a restriction that we had. You couldn't bring certain zoning articles back within less than two years or something.
Private, private parties that put a warrant article on for rezoning change are so limited. But the board itself is not so limited because we can vote that we we want it. It's the same thing with a private party. If the planning board votes, yes, we want it, it can be brought back earlier.
I'm going to suggest on this particular matter that if town meeting says you've done too much here and going from eight fifty to nine hundred is too much. If we presented the town meeting at nine hundred, that's a very simple amendment to make on the floor of town meeting without having to do any, you know, substantial redrafting.
I agree, Paul.
I understand that. And I do recognize that I think more particularly this state looks at an ADU as not less than two hundred and fifty square feet and not more than nine hundred square feet at the present time. That may change, but that's, there was a, there was another gentleman who had his hand up a minute ago. If I could ask you to come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, that would be helpful, please.
My name is Bill Zelko. I live on the Hoyden Street. And I'm a town meeting member as well. And I come to this a little late. I happened to be at the building department about a week ago reviewing a schematic plan for an ADU on my own house. And the situation is that I have a son who currently lives out of state, has three children. He'd like to come back to the town he grew up in and buy the home. And he would be willing and he's actually multi-generational is is fine with him to have grandparents in the house. So I can tell you this, that the the eight hundred and fifty square feet is, I believe, too small, especially for active seniors. I am a senior. I'm seventy-six years old. My wife and I are very active. You know, locally and and when we travel out of state to visit this particular son, we actually stay for a month and I rent a corporate apartment. And it just happens to be about eight hundred and fifty square feet. And when you get active people, that that is too small a space, really. You know, we need a little privacy from time to time. You need a a small den or, you know, some other spot to go to. My wife tends to be a night owl and I tend to go to bed early. And this is, you know, these are the dynamics of of marriage and and family. And and so I I was you know, would like you to consider going to a thousand square feet. I I happen to have built apartments and affordable housing and you know, I I think that in order to have adequate-sized laundry and have space, going back to this apartment that we rent, you know, it has one large closet, which is good, but you know, when you have active seniors, you have suitcases and other things that you put away for a while, but and then you pull them when you need it. So so, you know, in my mind, a minimum of a thousand, if not a thousand fifty or so, just to get that extra space for the dinner. And then the other is, you know, I know the one-bedroom and probably the two-bedroom is too much of a push for people, but really it's you know, sometimes we're, you know, the separate bedroom situation is in my wife and I are in, we have a great big house and we're in that situation now where as I say, she she could be up till two or three o'clock in the morning doing things and sewing and whatever. And it was just, so that was something I wanted to advocate for. And I appreciate your consideration and thought on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So so one thing to keep in mind, definitions of things, I believe a bedroom is defined as having to have a closet. I believe. And if it doesn't have a closet, it's not a bedroom. In a kitchen, your ADU is defined mainly mainly in the aspect if it has a stove. That that then defines the ADU. As opposed to you have a full kitchen, it doesn't have a stove, it has a countertop induction cooktop and has a really nice toaster oven. I'm just letting you know. And again, so that's a bedroom, that's the definition of ADU, it actually has an official kitchen. An official kitchen is a stove. It has a stove.
Which right now allows a gas stove.
Right, but that may
But does the point about having a den currently with the one-bedroom, you could have a den. Because as Marty points out, there, I mean, Artie points out that there are different differentiation of bedrooms in towns that have SECT system really matter a lot. But it's, it is the closet and the privacy of the door and so forth. But you can have a den.
But I think, is it Bill?
Yes.
Bill, I think Bill's point is that at eight hundred and fifty square feet, it becomes difficult to add that third room.
Yes, no, that's, I'm for the nine hundred.
It tends to trap up to space too much.
Although we've had, I mean, just so you know, we've had, we have two. The board has reviewed, planning board has reviewed two applications tonight for two ADUs that the ZBA will rule on. One of which is six hundred and forty square feet. And the other is eight hundred and forty-nine. So there, so one of those, it's not to say that that's applicable in your scenario. You know, one scenario doesn't necessarily fit all, but it just but it just does go to show you that in some cases, they're not building them to the max either, and they're still able to, you know, deliver whatever needs that they need to be met. But I, you know, we'll take it, we'll have that discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to support Gene's suggested change to increase it to nine hundred for purposes of our sending this to the select board so that we can continue this discussion at the public hearing. If we choose to bring it back to eight fifty, we can. But if we have it at eight fifty, we can't, I don't think we can take it up to nine hundred after the hearing.
I don't think, we're not hurting ourselves by bringing this to discussion. And I mean, I have reservations whether it's going to pass. I don't have an issue with the nine hundred. I have concerns of whether it's going to pass with what we're talking about as far as the separate structures and the setbacks. That's where my concern lies. I'm not concerned with eight fifty to nine hundred. I think we should bring it to discussion, see what happens with the public feedback.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just one final point. I think that, I hear what you're saying about the six fifty and the eight hundred. And I think that works very well for, you know, a single adult, perhaps, you know, a mother or a father. But again, looking into the future, my own, you know, active seniors, I think, is an opportunity here. And you would essentially have company over as well, so you need the space to, you know, live. That's all. Thank you.
So we have three changes.
Did you have other changes beyond the nine hundred?
No, that's all I have.
So before we move forward then.
We have those three changes that we all seem to be agreeable to.
Yes. So now, there was one other comment. We have, I think, a requirement in the bylaw. I'm just trying to pull it up that I think defers to, that the building inspector should be required, building commissioner should be required to get the DRB, DRB's concurrence to deny an ADU on the grounds that it does not look like a single-family residence. And I'm not sure it's, it's an unnecessary complexity that adds, you know, more regulatory framework that may not be necessary. And it was effectively to give some cover for the building commissioner. But if, you know, but he could otherwise, he could still otherwise deny it. And perhaps another version of it may be instead that he may, but is not required, to consult the DRB.
If I may respond to this, he is not required to consult the DRB if he feels comfortable granting the building permit. It's only if he doesn't feel comfortable granting the building permit. And that is, and we recently added the word solely, solely due to concern that the above- referenced standards. There may be reasons to deny the building permit because the ADU doesn't comply in this way or that way with the standards. But if it's solely due to the building inspector's concern that these standards about the, whether it maintains the appearance and essential character of a single-family dwelling, he doesn't know whether that's met or not.
But he may be able to make that determination himself without having to go through the DRB.
If he wants to grant the permit, and he makes that determination himself.
No, if he's denying it.
If he denies the permit.
I have spoken with the building inspector, who was appreciative of the language as it's currently drafted. He doesn't feel comfortable denying something on a discretionary ground without input from the design review board or from some other entity.
And so the reason, as I recall, as I recall, the reason that we're putting in the language about going to the design review board is because if we don't have that language there, and the building commissioner, I was about to say inspector, that's why I hesitated, and the building commissioner denies the permit, then the applicant's sole recourse is to spend the money to appeal to the ZBA. And this is a much less expensive and probably faster way to go to get the issue resolved than requiring the applicant to go to the ZBA. And I hadn't heard before that the building commissioner actually would rather have the input of the design review board if there's some question in his mind.
Lee, thank you for the clarification. Anything else from anyone on ADUs? Then I think, can I have a motion to approve for, transmit it to the warrant committee on ADUs? As the warrant committee, right?
Not as the warrant commission. The select board. Let's understand. The statute says that whenever somebody brings a zoning amendment, which applies to everybody, not just the planning board.
Sure.
You know, it's kind of crazy that the planning, if the planning board's presenting it, it has to go to the select board and then come back. But if it were a private citizen or if it were the ZBA, it has to go to the select board first, and then the select board sends it to the planning board.
Right.
It's not the warrant commission. It's the select board at this stage.
Thank you for the clarification. Can I then have a motion to transmit our ADU amendment as revised tonight to the select board?
Do we want to say what the particular?
I'm going to say, as, I'm going to make the motion.
Thank you.
I move that we submit to the select board the ADU amendment as presented in our packet with the three changes recommended by Gene this evening. Namely, that changing the word, changing the word "primary" to "principal"
Excuse me, opposite, principal to primary.
Changing "principal" to "primary" in one place where it appears. And increasing the permissible size of an ADU from eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred square feet wherever it appears. And what was the third one?
Eliminating Subsect B of three to three and three-two to require certain setback requirements.
I thought that was already taken out in the.
It's taken out in the revised draft.
Yeah.
It's taken out in the second draft.
That was already taken out in the draft. It's in our packet tonight.
It's in our packet. Excuse me, you're right. I forgot that.
Okay, so with the two changes.
It's really only two changes compared to the packet.
So, Lee, are you clear?
Yes.
Do I have a second? Second motion by Paul Alpert, a second by Artie Crocker. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker. Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Gene McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we have resolved our ADU position for now. Thank you all very much for your participation. I think it shows that by good community engagement, we're able to actually make some significant reform. Then we have a few other items that are effectively housekeeping items, which include as Article Three that Lee has drafted, to amend the zoning bylaw corrective zoning amendments. The first is to replace the reference building inspector with building commissioner. The second is to renumber three-point-one-five and thereafter. And the third, what I may call the Maggie Amendment, if I may, is amends Section five-point-one-point-two of the required parking by deleting in the first sentence of the second paragraph the word "second addition" and inserting the words "the most recent addition of", after the words "recommendations based on", so that the sentence now reads as detailed in our packet. Does anyone have any other comments on those amendments? Hearing none, then I'll come, I'll ask for a motion. Oh.
Gene, Gene and I talked about, there's just some cleanup. I'm going to, just so you know, I think I'm going to add, weren't there some cleanup items, Gene, here? I'm just trying to remember.
That's on Article Four.
Oh, it's on Article Four. This one's fine. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This one's fine.
And then I thought that there was another change that the building commissioner was looking for.
That's in Article Four.
Right.
I did not, we did not, I did not treat that as a corrective zoning amendment. I think it rose outside of those limits.
So are we going to be able to make that change subsequently?
That's the next article you're going to be talking about.
There we go. All right. So for Article Three.
So I move that we send Article Three as presented in our packet to the select board.
Thank you very much.
Second.
We have a motion by Artie Crocker, a second by Gene McKnight.
Motion by Paul.
Thank you. A motion by Paul Alpert, a second by Gene McKnight. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Gene McKnight.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you for the correction, Lee. So now we're dealing with Article Four, to amend the zoning bylaw, single residents being general residents side setback. Lee, do you want to explain the change and why?
Yes, the reason, when the Large House Study Committee was formed, one of the recommendations that came out of that group to remove the mastic along the sidewall of houses that were being constructed in the single residences B and general residents district was to require that the side of the house be broken up in terms of its massing, so that after you, the house extended thirty-two linear feet, there had to be a step-in of two feet for the remainder of the structure. And I think it was intended all along that that would happen irrespective of whether the house was actually sided at the level of the setback of the two-foot offset that was required after thirty-two linear feet. The building inspector has had some circumstances where people are building houses, and they're actually building the structure at that two-foot inset that's required. And they are claiming that therefore they don't need to break up the wall, and they can have this long linear wall. And because I think it was always the intent coming out of the Large House Study Committee that that was an important element to break up massing. He wants, he has asked that the language be clarified to document that intent. And the purpose of this change is really directed at that. I think he's been requiring that it be done, but he wants the language cleared up so that he won't be having those conversations or arguments anymore.
So does anyone have any comments or questions on Article Four?
I just have a couple of typos, I think I'd call them, that I discovered. In number one, in one, two, three, four, five, in the sixth line, after the underlined word "construction" is a reference to footnote E. But it's redundant because later in the clause, it refers to footnote E. So I think it should read simply by adding at the end of the last sentence of footnote E the words, rather than saying, as it does now, footnote E, by adding at the end of the last sentence of footnote E. So just take out that redundant phrase, footnote E. And then the other is, in number two, it should begin with the word "amend" as number one and number three do.
Yep.
Any other comments? Gene? Do you want the, do you want this?
What was the?
Oh, wait a minute. Excuse me. You're right to.
You're amending footnote E.
Footnote E, yes. You're right, Paul. When I look at number two and number three, they use the same thing, although they have footnote as one word, as it should be. Whereas A has footnote, and that caught my attention. And then I said, why do we need to say footnote twice? But I see that's the pattern we're using.
Because that's what we're amending. We're amending the footnote.
All right. So, excuse me, going back to that, the only change that needs to be made is to have the word "foot", to have the two words footnote. You changed to one word. Okay.
And I, Mr. Gene, what was the second change that you're making?
In number two, the first word should be "amend", amend.
Oh, yes.
The way it is in one, in two, in three.
Thank you very much, Gene.
End parentheses on the root period, the N.
Parenthesis on what?
An end parentheses, close the parentheses.
Close parentheses at the end of paragraph.
That's right. That's right.
Where it says new language underlined. You take out the quotes and put in parentheses.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
That's just.
Thank you, everybody.
Hit the wrong key.
I must have been hitting the wrong keys.
We have three little.
Well, you use your pinky. Keys, so.
Okay.
All right. Gene, thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Alex, thank you for your catch.
That we send Article Four, a men's zoning bylaw, single residents being general residents side setback, to the select board for their sending back to us with the three changes discussed tonight. Namely, in paragraph one, changing the two words footnote to one-word footnote, beginning paragraph two by adding the word "amend", and at the end of paragraph three, changing the end quote to an end paragraph. And.
Parenthesis.
Parenthesis. Thank you.
Second.
See you in your moment.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by Artie. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker. Gene McKnight.
Aye.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have gone through quite a bit of zoning reform. Thank you very much. This brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the definitive subdivision Scenic Road Act and Public Shade Tree Act public hearings at eight fifteen for the property located at nine-twenty South Street with Brian Cotton as petitioner. We have in our packet a letter from attorney George Junta for the petitioner dated February seven, two thousand and twenty-three, requesting a continuance for the applications to March seventh or March twenty-eighth, and an extension of the action deadline to March nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three. To May nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you very much, Paul. Can I please have a motion to continue these hearings to March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven oh five P.M., and to extend the action deadline to May nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three? We have a motion by Artie, a second by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker. Gene McKnight.
Aye.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have continued that hearing. I do, before I come to report from colleagues and our director of planning and our assistant director of planning, Artie, a minute ago, you made a comment about the legal definition of a bedroom. And I just, I think that might be, you meant that that's your opinion of what you think. But it may not actually be the legal definition, and that you would encourage.
I think that's a definition that's used for, I know it's used for purposes of if you have a septic system.
It's Paul.
And the number of bedrooms.
I'm going to actually disagree with you because I deal with this pretty frequently. Different municipalities define a bedroom differently, and it relates to various codes. I don't want anyone in the public to rely on the planning board or on a comment that Artie said as a definition for what a bedroom is. Instead, I think we would all. Instead, I think we would all encourage anyone that's looking for a definition of what a bedroom is to consult first with the building commissioner, if not a real estate attorney.
Lee, do you have a definition of a bedroom?
I am not going to intervene here. I, I thought the Title V was, had always linked the bedroom to the closet. But I, this is not my area of expertise, so I don't have a.
Title V.
Title V is common. Some municipalities have a specific distinction on the size of the room, other municipalities. And also, I think another state standard may be another means of egress. So, but the point is, I don't want the public to rely on the planning board in our commentary of what we think a definition of a, of what we think a definition of a, of a bedroom is because I want to ensure that they have the proper source, which would be the, you know, the building code and in particular the building commissioner, the municipality that they're reviewing. So with that clarification.
I just want to point out, I want to make a humorous note here, and I'm saying this with all good humor. When I bought our current house, our house has three bedrooms. There is a fourth room that is our den. It happens to have a linen closet in it. So a linen closet has shelves. It does not have a closet with hanging bars. And the real estate broker who was showing us the house insisted that that was a fourth bedroom. Because it had a linen closet.
There are these colloquial expectations. And that's right. I get it. Some.
And if you have septic, I never checked to see if I've got a three bedroom or four bedroom septic system.
Oh, according to Title V.
And that's probably why it was a three and said colloquially, you may be able to use it. As long as they don't hang their clothes. So, so this brings us to the last item on our agenda, which is the report from the planning director and planning board members. Natasha, I'll come to you after Lee. So Lee, do you want to, do you have anything to report and Alex?
I just want to report, I think I was included in your package tonight that we filed the, I filed the action plan with the state for compliance with the MBTA guidelines at the end of the month. And so we met our January 31st deadline. And embedded in that document is, you know, a schedule of how we're gonna hopefully move forward on all this. I just wanted to let you know that I begun the process with G, with GIS to look at the actual modeling of what the build out would look like using the DHDD compliance model and the recommendations that are coming out of the housing plan. So we're going to be moving forward on at least that component of it to see how the recommendations in that housing plan, what, how it leads really into a housing production model. And we're also looking at the next steps in terms of community, community meetings and the technical assistants and consultants that we might need to bring on board to help us facilitate basically the build out analysis and the modeling that will be required in the zoning drafting and the fiscal impact analysis that will be associated with all of that work. So we are starting to move forward, which I think is a very positive step. And hopefully we can make the deadline of December 2024 to get the actual zoning done and implemented. I think that's everybody's goal here, although it's going to be a very tight and a very aggressive schedule.
Yes, it will. But I'm gonna help facilitate that, you know, so we can master that timing. And we've some other items that we want to address before then. Thank you very much. Natasha, you sent us a file that consisted of a number of what I like to call climate smart zoning reform initiatives undertaken by other municipalities. Did you want to report on that?
Sure, and so before I do that, I just want to say one thing. Jean and I are going to be on the Needham channel talking about the housing work, the master plan. And that we, I think, Jean, it was last Friday, I can't even remember or the one before. Anyway, we, just to let you know, as representatives of the planning board, we were discussing some questions that were proposed to us to, to describe the housing plan and the working group and, and moving forward. So I don't know when that is supposed to come out, but that happened a week ago or so. And then the second piece is, so I'm part of the climate action bank committee and there's a meeting this Thursday. And Oscar Merz and Stephen Frail had sent me some information on, on, we've done some research on solar zoning examples. And I had also added others. So we have examples from Somerville and Cambridge and Brookline and just in general, the mass solar, the model zoning for the regulation of solar energy systems from the Department of Energy Resources. There is also something that, that I put in there. And so it's just to get us started on, on understanding what's already been written about solar bylaws so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel and we can have fruitful discussions about them. So we can see how, I think, I think Lee has a lot on her plate as what we determined for, and we would have to make all the decisions by tonight, is that right, Lee, for, for this?
I think it's too early actually to do this, to do the zoning on the climate smart stuff. I think our goal for that ought to be the fall.
Okay, so in general, I wanted to kickstart it, but.
Lee, Natasha, thank you very much for the kickstart. Lee, looking at the schedule for, for May town meeting, if the, I think we'd have to have the, the planning board to finalize any final language by February 28th to include an illegal notice and on the same night vote to send that final language to the select board if in the intervening 21 days, we, you know, we actually were able to devise that language. Is that schedule correct and still on, still accessible?
That schedule is still accessible, but I think it's really figuring out what you want to do and what the policy objectives are. I mean, I think you understand how long it took us to get through the ADU bylaw. And I, I see a similar process probably happening around these ideas. I think it's a question of looking at what other communities have done, identifying what our, what our policy goals are. We're not going to just take Brookline and plop it into Needham. I think we're gonna, there are, there are policy questions and objectives that these towns have addressed and that's reflected in the zoning that they've developed. So I think using these communities as a model, looking at identifying the items we want to accomplish over the course of the next couple of months, developing the policy the same way we did around the ADUs and then creating the zoning to implement it. I think that really doesn't happen in three weeks. So that's why I would think that the goal ought to be the fall.
I understand. And I, you know, for record, disagree with some in, in town that think that the October town meeting should only be done for, you know, one or two items and not for zoning. I hope that we're able to, you know, make some significant change with the climate smart reform and, you know, starting perhaps at the latest in October. Jean, at this time, I'd like to turn to you to make an honorary motion to adjourn.
Excuse me, I have something to bring up. As, as a member of the community preservation committee, as the planning board's appointee, there's a meeting tomorrow evening to consider the certain application, you know, certain of the applications. And I read them today and among them is to support the Needham Housing Authority's proposed changes to the Linden Chambers housing area. And it's part of that in the budget of that, which at this point is, is for planning purposes, planning engineering, et cetera, rather than actual construction that will occur at a later stage. But they put in an amount of $1 million for investigation and action on zoning that would allow the redevelopment. And I just have no idea why they put the amount of $1 million for that task. I mean, there are, the area is presently zoned, general residence, which was done 10 years ago, maybe 15, to accommodate the change of the small bungalows to two families in that area, then got zoned. So they do need denser zoning. We decided in the housing plan work not to go, not to consider what was needed there because we, the housing authority was at such a stage that they really didn't know the answer as to what they needed. But they, they talk about perhaps using friendly, so-called friendly 40B. But of course, they also could go to town meeting and seek a rezoning for what they need. So can anybody think or respond to why they would need $1 million for that task?
I would not without reading through all the information and what they're, what they're up to. It's a question I think for the organization, did they?
I'll ask the question tomorrow night. Yeah.
And to Rex or?
Yeah. Is it, do others have the same response that that's excessive amount of money to need for that purpose or?
I don't know what they're investigating and, and how they would otherwise. I would need to see a budget. I need to see a schedule. I need to see an action plan. I need to see a statement of what their goals are that they intend to find. I don't know how far into the future they're looking to define a program, is it program base? And what it would look like zoning, subsequent zoning changes that they would need. I just, they'd have to ask all those questions, I think, too.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of.
A million dollars to make zoning changes.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of detail in their application that go in that direction. And I just find it hard to understand.
This is a legitimate question for the CPC.
Yeah.
It's the CPC's money.
Yes, exactly, for the CPC to ask the applicant that question.
You know, I'm, I'm your predecessor representative of the planning board in the CPC. And a million dollars is a large chunk of the CPC's available funds.
Yes.
A very large chunk.
Yes.
Lee, did that, did that come through you? Do you have any comment or question on that?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right.
And then the other thing, Mr. Chair, did you want to say anything about this? One is on 888 Great Plains Avenue.
I already handled it.
Oh, you did say that, okay. Then, yes. It is time to adjourn. And thank you for referring that motion to adjourn to me because I want to, I, I move that we adjourn this meeting in memory of and in honor of Sam Bass Warner, who was a member of this planning board for one term about 10, 15 years ago. And a wonderful member of this board. His service to this town by being on our planning board, I really want to honor. As you know, he, he died about a week and a half ago. And there will be a memorial service in, at the, at our town library, actually, for Sam. But not only to speak of his memory, but to honor him for his, he was an urban historian who taught at many universities, who wrote several books, including Streetcar Suburbs, his first book focusing on Boston. And so he not only brought to our planning board, you know, his skill set, but his deep background in urban history and what he contributed to the field of urban planning. So I adjourn this meeting in, in, in the memories and honor of Sam Bass Warner. If anybody wants to add anything.
I would like to add that I succeeded Sam Bass. I'm sitting in Sam Bass Warner's seat. And so the year before, after, after Sam had announced that he was not going to run for reelection and I decided to run for this seat, I started coming to planning board meetings and sitting in. And at that time, Sam was the only planning board member who was not a lawyer. And it was you and Marty and Bruce and Liz. Four lawyers and Sam Bass Warner. And what I was impressed with was that, of course, we lawyers think like lawyers. But Sam wasn't a lawyer. And I was greatly impressed with the perspective of the sole non-lawyer on the board, what he brought to the board, basically putting all the lawyers in their place by reminding them that there are issues other than just the legal issues and looking at it from, from the legal point of view. And, and it's, he was, I saw during that time period when I was seeing Sam in action, that he, he brought great wisdom to the planning board.
Wisdom, vision, thank you.
When I saw Sam, he brought, there was a lot of social awareness, I thought, related to Sam when I saw him. I saw him as someone who is, his only intent was caring of the community, period. You know, again, the environment, the community, the social aspect of it. That's why when I think of Sam, that's where, that's where I think of Sam.
I'd like, I'd like to say that I found it a joy to work with Sam. I remember reading college, having to read Streetcar Suburbs and then all of a sudden this man, author of the book, was sitting on the planning board. But I think what I most appreciated about Sam was his perspective and his way of being able to see issues from an angle that I hadn't thought of before and helping me reframe how I saw things. And that's really what I saw, what, what I found to be really enlightening about him, that I was looking at things from a very, I considered a narrow perspective. And he always brought a new way of evaluating a circumstance and caused me to rethink how I actually viewed reality.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
And he always provided homemade cookies. Yes, so.
And I'm sorry to say that I, that I never met Sam. I've heard all these stories about him and I, I feel really sad. And it's unfortunate that I never was able to work with him and that I didn't meet him. But I will be reading the book now that everyone has highlighted it. Anyway, and, and I wish I was there to eat a cookie. All right.
We have a motion by Jean and a second by Paul Alpert.
I want to put a third.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Aye, the chair votes aye, we have adjourned. Thank you all very much. What time is the state of the?